Good evening and welcome to our special meeting of the Board of Education of the Brown Olivia Legulien Independent School District number 2534. And we will begin tonight with the, everyone is present and we'll begin tonight with the approval of our agenda.
Make that motion, Jill.
Motion is made by Sagidol.
Well, second.
Seconded by Bookbill. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. We'll begin with Brian.
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye. Just probably just make sure we speak out so that the mic picks us up. Alright, so recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Let me add a couple more people here, admit a few more. And thank you all for coming out tonight. To witness our meeting. Alright, moving on to business. Determine the process and timeline for the superintendent's search. So, what we're gonna do to start with here is recap from our last meeting, last special meeting, that was March 29th. We briefly discussed hiring a full-time superintendent and doing the search ourselves. Sandy and Teresa wanted to see budget numbers before we could discuss further, so it was decided to meet again on April 12th after the finance committee had a chance to meet. The committee met last Thursday with Mr. Bransoy and today with Mr. Bransoy and Lindsay Heiney, our business manager. At this time, I would like the members of the finance committee to give their report to the rest of the board on the past two meetings that were held. So, go ahead, whoever would like to.
I'll start. Um, we, I thought we had a really good meeting on Thursday. We discussed options for full-time interim, part-time. I feel like you guys jump in, we all agreed that a full-time superintendent was probably a good option. Okay. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the committee, I think we probably have some different opinions.
Yeah.
Um, we, Sandy and Teresa both wanted some more budget information, which was great because we met with Lindsay today and she did bring us some more budget information. It was Lindsay's recommendation, I think there's a way that we can do it with some restructuring to have our administrative team stay within the budget that we already are spending on the administrative team. I don't know that we all agree on that, that is the route that I would like to go. I think you two want some more information from Lindsay, which I, she said she was gonna email you.
Well, I wanna make a clarification. We're finance committee and I felt, I was not comfortable at that meeting because we talked about superintendent stuff and when you're on finance, we should be talking about finance. The special meeting shouldn't have been about the superintendent. So, that part was frustrating for me. I definitely wanted budget or financial information from our last meeting, and that's what I was hoping to get last Thursday, was financial information, which we did not receive. The only information we got was numbers that Mr. Bransoy put together with the administration, how he felt that that should be. And I know I requested at least six times during that meeting for financial information and didn't get it. And then we had a meeting again today, like you stated, with Lindsay. And I had to walk out on that meeting because again, the information was so vague. We got five little pages, one with a graph on it, and I specifically asked for detailed stuff and still haven't gotten it. And I had to walk out of that meeting because I felt like we cannot make a decision for our community and for this school district without us board members knowing exactly where we're standing, where the monies are coming in and out, seeing where everything's flowing through the school district. I think we can't do justice to that, we can't pretend like we know and just move forward. It's not good for the school district or the community.
Okay, I think that today, the meeting, it got a little bit tense, I think we can all agree on that. Um, I think everyone's passionate and I believe that everybody in this room wants what's best. It really weighed on me after the meeting today.
It weighed on me too.
It really did. And it left me thinking about what our rules are as board members. And, and I was unclear, and so I did go on MSBA and just a few things that I highlighted, and I did bring my glasses, but you know, one of the things under the conduct and ethics is spend time on board governance work rather than staff work and focus on the ends, not the means. And I think that was one thing that Lindsay brought up today, was you're board members and I'm the business manager, and I felt like she felt that she wasn't trusted and that she was being very, very questionable, even though I know that you both said you do a great job and she does an amazing job. The other thing I highlighted was follow established policies, including the chain of command, by directing people with concerns to the appropriate staff. The chain of command doesn't only apply to parents and students, it applies to us as board members. And I don't know that it's right for us to be calling Lindsay separately, I believe that our contact with the school is Mr. Bransoy, and then he can pass that on to where it needs to get passed on, or if he says, "Oh, Lindsay would like to call you to clear something up," or whatever. Just a couple of things I pointed out. And then, you know, just back on kind of the chain of command is that, you know, we select and employ one person, the superintendent, as the district's chief executive officer to lead and manage the school district. And sometimes I just wonder if we're just getting a little bit too involved in these day-to-day, you know, our job is not Lindsay's job. That's what she's hired to do, and I feel we need to trust what she's telling us and giving us recommendations along with Mr. Bransoy.
I don't think that has anything to do with trust. It's like, I wanna see the numbers myself. We were elected here from the community to serve our community, and Mr. Bransoy and Lindsay work for us, not the other way around. And so, when we ask for information, it has nothing to do with trust. To me, if you're, if you're not, if you're trustworthy, you should be like, "Hey, I'm open book, how many reports do you want? Here you go, take a peek." It has nothing, I don't know why this whole trust thing, if you wanna go down the trust thing, we can go down the trust thing, but this has nothing to do with trust. This is just wanting to know what's going on so we can make educated decisions. That's what business people do. That's how you make educated decisions, is just being, asking those questions and getting those answers.
I just think, as a business owner myself, and I know, you know, you are too, and you have a lot of experience too, it's just a very different world. And so, I do rely on Lindsay and Mr. Bransoy to give us those recommendations.
Well, my take on the whole thing, I was a little disappointed when I asked, the one thing I said was in that meeting is I would like to see Lindsay here more often because it would be easier if we could just call her here at the school instead of getting a hold of her. And Dale said numerous times, "If you have a question, let me or Lindsay know." Well, to me, that's an open book, him or Lindsay. If I have a question for him, I would ask him. Every board meeting that I've asked him a question, he goes, "Well, I don't know, you have to ask Lindsay." Well, why would I go through him if I'm gonna have to go through her and wait for him?
And I didn't know that, so.
And so, I sent her an email the other day, or last week, and I said, "I like this information, and I know you're really busy, please don't feel like you have to get it today, you can get it for me tomorrow," or whatever. And in that process, well then, we had our meeting, and then Dale had talked to her about that. But it's frustrating for me because I'm a numbers person, and for me, I don't like to be a bottle head sitting here, "Yep, yep, yep," you know what I mean? Yeah, that looks good, whatever. If I'm gonna be put on a board to do what's right, and I'm assuming that's what the community wants you to do, to do what's right for the community and the kids and the school, I have to do my diligence because that is my background, to look at numbers. And it was nothing against Lindsay, when I said to her today, "Lindsay, I would just like to see you here more than one day a week, two or three, I would be great," and then Mr. Bransoy comes unglued on me because of it. That's not fair to me. It was frustrating. And I said, "That's all I asked, is if we can have her two or three days a week." Because to me, that's important, to have someone like that here more often than one day a week. They're already, I mean, we're already looking for another one again, another gal to help in the office. So, if you have Lindsay here one day a week, and then we're still looking for somebody else, that puts a whole bunch more on her, plus than a new person has.
Well, I don't think it's putting more on Lindsay at this point. Lindsay is, you wanna see her more because you want her to be there when you wanna.
Well, not so much. It'd be nice for her.
Because she's getting the job done. She's getting the job done.
Well, it'd be nice for her to be in the building.
I don't think she can because she has four other districts besides ours.
Well, I know that, that's the problem. And that's what I said, maybe it would.
And maybe we're getting off topic here with this, and maybe it needs to be discussed further, where we do need to have an assistant business manager, maybe that does seem to be part of our.
I think that should be part of the package.
You know, and there maybe that can be more of a go-to person or.
Right.
So, I think, and I've asked about school finances before, and I've been told that there are very, very few people because, like, you know, like you run a business, you've got your debits, your credits, you've got all your general ledger, whatever, but with school, it's so much different because you've got state funding, you've got grant funding, you've got all these different.
You have things that come in two years after.
Right.
The year, the fiscal year.
And so, they say it's not the same.
It's a completely different program, we're used to QuickBooks or that type of thing, and this is, I don't even know what it's called. Um, it's completely different, so I'm not gonna, you know, pretend like I understand all the ins and outs of it.
No. And basically, when I look at, what I was asking for basically is expenses, because I know the revenues coming in are gonna be all over the place. But when you know what your expenses are, you know what they're gonna be, it's not, that's not, and the only time you don't is if there's maybe a capital project or something like that, that's weeded out, but.
And I think this is, this is what we need to see.
Well, I like, I like details.
Well, yeah, and that's fine, because if I'm a detail person. I think that's great.
Because I can put numbers in front of you and just say, "Yeah, well, that looks good."
Are we not getting expenses every month?
You do.
You do.
You need to see more detail because there's restricted and unassigned, and the restricted has some numbers behind it and broken down, but for the unassigned or the unrestricted, it's just a dollar amount. I wanna know, see those monies coming in and out. You know, in a business too, they said that this is cash basis. Our business is cash basis too, and if you have a budget and a machine goes down and you can't repair it, you have to buy a machine, that's an unexpected expense. And so, we're, I'm fully aware of that, I've been doing accounting for 30 years.
But this is, it is different. I mean, they'll just.
Of course it is, every business is gonna be a little bit different. But I wanna look at that and just check it out.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Right, I don't think there should be.
The thing with this is, is when you have something that's really different like this, for people that do accounting, you wanna understand what you're okaying in this. If this is that different, by gosh, we better be able to understand what we're okaying on these numbers. Not that it's a trust issue, it's just that if I'm gonna say yes to something, I don't want it to come back later and I go, "Oh, why did I do that?" Because I didn't really wanna do that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna know the numbers, what's being in there. And there is nothing negative about Lindsay, she does a good job, and that's why I was hoping that when I asked her, "I'd sure would like to have you more than one day a week." Because, I mean, we do have a lot of things going on here right now and having so many extras. So, I think in this whole scheme of things, we need to look at that also. So, um, okay, it's my take.
I guess we're back to the super. My feeling was I, what I would like to see, and again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee because it was the three of us and they might have different ideas. What I would like to see, because I would like to get rolling on this, is for us to look for a full-time superintendent and get that open as soon as possible and start the superintendent's search. And I would like to do it ourselves, only because we did it last time ourselves and I felt like everything went great. So, I feel like we're capable of doing it ourselves, I don't think we need to hire an outside party. I don't think it's gonna save us much time to hire an outside party, that's my opinion.
Sounds like a motion.
I, I myself, I would like to just look at an interim one for the time being, because we're so late in the game right now. And to give ourselves some time to look for somebody that's experienced would be my perfect scenario, because if, if you don't have somebody experienced already, coming in with all the things that we got going on, to me, could something fall through the cracks? And that's where I'm thinking, if we start with an interim one, just to start with.
Question, if we went out for a superintendent's search, could, when we start interviewing, could we decide at that time if they would be an interim or a three-year contract or whatever? Because I feel like when we hired Dale, I feel like we weren't looking for an interim, or were we looking for an interim?
Yeah, no, it was an interim, part-time.
It was, oh, okay, so, I didn't know.
I think if you offer a one-year contract.
I mean, it would be the same as.
Basically, like an interim, without saying.
I mean, would that be a possibility?
The other, I know Teresa did call MSBA, I got a call from Barb Dorn, and without, I mean, typically Barb said, you know, typically when board members call me, they have the board saying, "Please call, you know, MSBA." And so, she did this on her own, and so Barb just basically said, "I looked into the interim list that they have, and none of them were willing to take on an interim job here." So, not saying there couldn't be others, but, you know, I just look at the, I look at if you, if you start with a year, you are gonna be reevaluating that contract next year. So.
Part forget, Jill, did you forget something here on the agenda? The recognition of visitors?
Yeah, I just.
Oh, so, does anybody get to speak?
No.
Oh, they don't. It's a special meeting.
Okay, alright, yeah. Well, that's one of the regular.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, it's one of the regular meetings. So, we do that.
What, I called Barb Dorn because she was kind of the head of the whole superintendent thing, and my question was to her, "Is it typical for the superintendent to be part of the superintendent's search?" And she said, "Absolutely not." She said, "The superintendent should not be part of it." She said, "The school board needs to look forward and not in the rearview mirror." She said, "That should be the school board only, and that's where the superintendent steps aside, is not supposed to have any part of that." And I did give her your name, and told her that you were the board chair, and to pass it on to you, because I felt if you heard it first from her, I mean, that's probably the best.
And she did not, she did not tell me that. I guess, I would use Mr. Bransoy as a resource only. I mean, I'm not, we're not asking him to weigh in on this, I'm not sure why this is such a sticking point, but it has been.
Because he has been, he's got it all planned out, I mean. Yeah, he's got the whole thing planned out here, Jill.
We have, we have talked about this, I have some experience in this as well, so.
Okay, so you two have talked about it.
I have been a part of the last search, and the information that I'm seeing from Mr. Bransoy has been identical to what you see from the MSBA. At that time, it's very, very similar in laying out the timeline, laying out, you know, objectives and that kind of thing, so it's.
Well, I'm not talking about that, but last Thursday, Mr. Bransoy has laid out as far as administration, who's gonna be in what areas already, and the.
Well, it was, here's a few options that you could consider, I would say it was like, this is what we're doing.
This came one of the March 29th meeting when he said that he would talk to the administrative team.
Right.
And meet with you as a finance committee, that's why you guys were meeting, so.
That was before the 29th, Jill.
No, it was March 29th was our last meeting, the special meeting.
No.
Yes, it was.
That was discussed at the superintendent's evaluation that night.
Well, it was also, it was discussed March 29th, because you guys wanted to have finance committee meeting.
Because you discussed it, you discussed it the night of his evaluation.
Okay, but March 29th was when you guys decided you wanted a finance committee meeting, and that's when that moved forward, so.
I didn't look at that as, this is what you need to do, I looked at it as, here's some things to think about it.
Yeah.
What should I think about?
Well, when we, when I had questions about it, he got upset because I didn't agree with what he had here. And I had brought up other questions for it, and so to me, I feel like that was already planned out.
I have to say, I agree.
May I interject? Sit here. First of all, Lindsay's job is business manager. And I respect that position, and that when it comes to budgeting, I rely on her. And this is the first situation where she said that she has been involved with the planning of a budget, with working with me. She's quality. When she makes a recommendation, then we really seriously look at that administratively. When it comes to the board, it's gone through her, from her to the administrative team to the board, it's gone through the whole gamut of planning. And I think we need to respect that, and that's what I feel is the lack of what happened today with Lindsay. That's her job, and that's what she's getting paid to do. And I respect that, and I'm gonna believe it until anything else shows up. And Lindsay knows more than anyone here about school finance. She knows about grants, she knows about levies, she knows about all of that, and I respect that for her. And that's what we do every time she's in the office. Yes, we would love to have her here, I've tried to get her two days. That's gonna double the month expenditure. We, why was that position cut, B, or I came? Because the district couldn't afford it. So, you gotta think of that. And so, it disturbs me when we put Lindsay in that position, because she is second to none when it comes to business managers, and that's her job. She's getting paid to do that. You expect that from her. So, don't return around and respect her and accept what she's putting together. When you come to the superintendent's search, she's the one that's put the dollars together. And what I told you was I felt that administratively, we could put a plan together where the dollars would remain very equivalent to what it is right now, and you'd end up with a full-time superintendent. That's the scenarios that were put together. And that's, that's what you asked to do at our last meeting. And that's what I brought back to the committee. And now, we're seeing a different picture of it. So, I think you've gotta determine if you want a full-time superintendent. And I think the issue this district has got going forward now, you need to. And I also talked with Barb at the MSBA, and she did not say that superintendent should not be involved. What she shared was that when you have a search team, normally the superintendent is not involved. But if you're doing your own search, then that superintendent could work and provide resources for you and support you. So, that's what she told me. And so, it was not a cut and dry. And so, go back to that one. I think the first thing you have to determine, what's the needs of the district? As your leader, the superintendent's key, and I shared this information with you with selecting of superintendents. And that is a key position or a key decision of a board committee. That's your CEO. So, you have to really respect that. So, what I think you're playing with, I'm trying to solve right now, is can you afford a full-time? That was the question that was put to the administrative team at our last meeting. That's when we brought the finance committee together to show the different plans, and the dollar a month of each one. And that's what was presented. And so, you can take it, take it from there, and so. It's up to the board to pick that person, it's you've gotta interview him, you've gotta make that decision, but I'm here to support you. I'm not here, you're enemy. I want you to get the best candidate out there, because Bold is a good school, and Bold needs strong leadership. And I think those are the things that we need to look at in selection, and you select, I don't. And so, don't think that. But I will support you, I will help in whatever way I can. So, please, don't, I think we've got more important things to be focusing on right now. But Lindsay's, you know, and she doesn't have the time for one thing, plus we don't have the resources to hire. Would love to have a full-time business manager in that office, would that ever be beautiful? With only 650 kids, you're not gonna have a full-time. So, you have to break it up. And that was done before I came. I think before I came, I think you did have a business manager. And it'd be lovely, it'd be great to have one. But you've gotta come back to reality and what we can afford.
Maybe back then, it probably maybe wasn't the best decision to completely cut that to one day, but it was. So, maybe now, you should look at it realistically now, where maybe we should do something more than that.
And I think you can look at that, but I think, right tonight, I think your focus is on the superintendent's. And I think you gotta make that decision very soon because.
That leads, I mean, that thought leads me to the reason why we need a full-time superintendent, you know, because of the budget. I mean, that's an everyday position, that's the CEO, as he said, of this district, that's a person who can focus on the budget, the finances, we have the facility issues going on. I mean, I think those are two critical areas why a full-time superintendent would be essential here.
I know that the people that have talked to me, staff members have talked to me, I don't, I don't, no one has said, "No, I think we can get by with part-time." It's been full-time, and that's what, they're hoping that we can figure out how to make that happen. So, and I think, you know, between Dale and Lindsay, they have worked to make a scenario to make that happen. I guess I have to trust that that's gonna happen, so.
And look at how it was arranged, how was it done? You know, it was administrative cut. That was what we could get it down to where you can afford. And so, that's what we're trying to do. And, and I know one of the members on the committee said, you know, "Don't you use past history to help budget?" And you definitely would do. And so, whatever program there is, we look at that, we say, "Okay, what happened last year? Now, put that in this year, are we gonna be able to do the same?" So. I think it'd be great. One thing Lindsay is in five schools right now, she's not gonna change that. And you're not gonna have two different people coming in. And so, Lindsay, with the support of the superintendent, with the support of the administrative team, can get the job done, and she does outstanding. And so, so I don't have any problems. I would love to. I give her that bad time every time she's in the office. So, that's not a, but it's, there's lots of things we'd like to have, but we've got a budget we have to protect too. And so, I think that's what, you know, Lindsay was trying to show, and Lindsay said at our committee meeting that she supports us. And I think that's the person that knows, and that's who I think we have to follow if we're gonna have what I would do.
I still don't understand why it's so hard, I don't understand why it's such a big deal to print out detailed financial information.
I think Lindsay did a good job explaining that, and she said that she would work on whatever you wanted her to print out.
Okay, I gave her a whole bunch of stuff today, so will I be getting that?
Pardon?
I gave her a list of a whole bunch of stuff today, will I be getting that?
Well, depends on what, when, what her schedule's like. I can't guarantee it. I don't know, tomorrow she's in, in, well. No, no, but.
Doesn't matter, she's somewhere else. Not here.
Not here, so she will get it sometime, if available. I mean, you'll probably get it tomorrow, I don't know. I don't have her schedule.
Can I ask?
Butterfield or something, what?
Can I ask a question? Like, is, I'm not quite understanding why we can't just email her and get the information because you don't have it anyway. What?
You don't know, you don't know if I have it or not, for one thing. And she's.
Well, I could about bet she didn't have the income statement that I wanted.
Well, I think she was, she was trying to figure out what you wanted, I think today. And I don't know that she really knew exactly what you wanted her to perform.
Maybe put them both in the loop, just so, just for Bransoy's also in the loop.
And then maybe if it is something he can answer, I just worry about taking up too much of Lindsay's time, if there's a lot, you know, a lot of things that we're asking her to do extra, is all, when she is in five districts.
We need to, then probably we look at that and get, rearrange our administrators, and get a full-time admin person in here, because.
I think so too.
That should be readily available to school board members or community members if they want it. If they want to see the financials, it shouldn't be trying to track her down. Maybe she's gonna have to take four districts and we get somebody else. We need, we need to look at that.
I think Lindsay explained that today to the committee. What reports she was giving out, and that's what prior years is what the board had asked for. And so that's what she's putting out. Now you've got some different people asking, so I think this.
She actually said that we in our board packet get much more than most districts get. Most districts will get, you know, this, and maybe one more thing. And we get more of a detailed report. And she said that that went back to some previous board members that wanted that. And that's 100% fine. If there's certain things that board members want to see, then I think.
I think given the situation we're in with our facilities and stuff, and all the decisions that need to be made. I really feel that we need to look into our finances more, just to see where we're at. So we can make really good decisions. Because obviously, we must not be getting enough information because of where we're sitting, where we're at right now.
Okay, but as, getting back to the superintendent part of it.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Because I think we actually probably have to have a motion to even have this discussion, do we not?
Well, technically, but as an informal board, you can have some discussion before, yes.
So I'll make a motion to, I would like to see a full-time superintendent and us do the search. With the, based off what Lindsay is saying that we can do it, I fully trust that we can do it. She's never straight us wrong, so.
All right, I'm pulling in with the motion. I will second that. Any discussion or questions?
I do. I agree with us doing the superintendent search. I agree with the second half of it, but not the first half.
Great. Any other?
Right now, I'm like.
Yep, that's fine. Any other questions or discussion?
You agree with?
Doing this.
Doing the search, but not deciding on a full-time at this moment. I think we need to.
I think we should wait with full-time and.
We don't have a lot of time, that's the problem.
When do we make that decision, is all I'm wondering. When is, what is your, what, this isn't asking chronologically, when do you think we should know?
Well, I think if we can get some more detail to see the monies coming in and out, the ebbs and flows of what's going on here. So we can see a little bit more in detail the, our financial position in the district. Then I think we can be like, well, okay, you know, we can look at maybe making some changes in the administration or whatever, like. But I wanna be able to see where the monies are coming in and out. Because we were supposed to get like some COVID funds. I see nothing in here about that. I'd like to know where that was applied, what that went to. Maybe those are things we can add to the superintendent's search. I mean, there's a lot of things out, because this is so vague, you don't even know what's in here. But, um.
I don't know if you can use COVID funds, because you're not gonna get that every year. You're not towards your budget.
Well, I know, but I just want, I'm just using that for example, that's a sample, whatever, but.
Looking at your example.
And then too, if the pool is so teeny right now, maybe an interim is our best bet. And then wait till the pool gets refilled. And then you look at the big pool, and it, like you're saying, it's so late. Instead of just making a rash decision, getting somebody that's just a couple people. Let's just see if we can find somebody that will just fill it in until we can find that big pool. And then let's really dig and get the first.
Are you talking about a full-time interim or a part-time interim, or what are you looking at?
I think it depends once you see more of the financials here and go through them.
So you're thinking if we look at this, and it tells us that we have this much, then we say, then we start looking for a part-time one? Because that's what we can afford? And then that, just until we decide that, well, we got this school we gotta run, and we got all of these things we gotta fix on our roofs. And we have all these financial things, and a part-time interim might be able to do that?
Don't know yet, yeah.
My thing, my thing is, I know that Dale's part-time, 4.6, and would work full-time. So I think that in order to get all these things done and completed, like you said, the facilities, everything else that's going on, we do need somebody full-time. And I mean, I guess if Lindsay's telling you that, and I wasn't in the meeting. So if Lindsay's saying that we can do this, then that's what, that's why I have to trust that we can do it.
I've just torn on it a little bit because we're leaning towards a, we want a office administrator that gives us numbers here and more, and more full-time. And we don't want a superintendent here full-time. And we have to make some huge decisions, you know, we need leadership. I don't understand that.
That's why I wanna see where we are more financially. I wanna see more detail of it, so we can look at and pick and choose.
What's missing, just curious?
I'm just trying to sum up what I heard, is all I'm saying. And yeah, I'm, I hope she gets you your numbers tomorrow. So if you get your numbers tomorrow, when do we know, when can we make our decision? When's our next meeting?
Well, the 26th is our next regular board meeting.
I mean, would there be one before that then, to try to get this thing going?
Well, we already made a motion and a second on this, on this motion, so.
And is this motion for an interim, or is this motion for one year, or is it full-time?
Not that you couldn't offer a one-year contract.
Yep.
Could we go out there and say, okay, we're looking for a superintendent? And part-time, full-time? And let's see what we get perhaps? Let, let the people come in and say, okay, I'm looking for full-time, I'm looking for part-time. See what kind of experience we get and kind of go from there. And then we kind of know.
I really feel like we need a full-time personally. We always had a full-time superintendent. When we hired Mr. Bransley, I know as a board, we talked about, we didn't know if part-time was gonna work for us. And I just feel like he puts in way more hours than what he gets paid for. And I just, I really feel that we need a full-time superintendent here. And I do agree with the business manager. I think it'd be great to, even if there was an assistant business manager, you know? I think that's something that we could look at. But I really strongly believe that we need a full-time superintendent.
And I think you, you gotta remember your business manager came up in support of it. She's the one that knows the numbers. And I don't know what number you're gonna look for. But then she takes it from her calculations. And I think what we look at is look at, and she shares general fund balances today. That's what you vote over by in a, in a school district budget. And you look at that. And then, but I think when you say, well, I respect Lindsay, she does a super job and everything, but we're not gonna trust what you're saying. What message are you putting out there to her? She's a valued employee of the district. And, and I'm, you know, the motion is on the floor too. And second to have a full-time superintendent. That's what Lindsay said at our meeting. If that was her, she would support that. If we could do it, she would not support, I know that. But I think she sees it's a critical position and you, you need to support.
And most importantly, I'm assuming that she believes financially the school can make that work.
That's what she's saying.
That's her recommendation.
And she would not say that if we weren't. And so I think you've gotta respect her. It isn't enough just to say, we respect you, Lindsay. We'd like to have you two days. But we're not gonna trust what you're telling us. And that's trust is important. It goes both ways. So you've got a motion, you've got a second.
Any other discussion? Hearing nothing, well, both will be in a.
I just wanna make sure everything is, is clear, like, for myself, I guess, more than anything.
Jamie, can you repeat? I didn't, I didn't get it written down, so can you repeat your motion?
What?
This for a full-time superintendent search that we do on our own?
Yes. Based off Lindsay's recommendation.
Okay, but there's no, we don't have to state interim, we don't have to state any of that right now.
Correct. I didn't put that in my motion.
Just making sure.
All right, anything else?
Can I just make one more statement then? Mr. Bransley, you did say this to the other day, that some financial guys told you that our district was able to handle that $93 million school. Financially, our district could handle that. But the people voted, 81, 80% said, no, we can't afford it. So you even had like financial people telling you, your district can afford it. But look how far off the mark they were when the people voted and they're saying, we can't afford this right now, we need a different plan. Well, I'm just, I'm using that as an example. It's like, yes, you can have someone in the financial.
Also, you also don't know that, that's why, just that you don't know that that's why 80% of the people voted no. I mean, just, it wasn't strictly because they couldn't afford it, there could be multiple reasons why people voted no.
And I'm sure there is.
I, I'm sure that was some, for some people, yes.
Right, but I'm, I'm just using that as an example too.
But that figure, what that statement was involved was that the bond company and MDE, in their report back to us, said that you had detached base to support it. That's all they, that's what they said. So that tells you that the district has got the value to support that building. And that, I don't know that that has anything to do with the vote. I don't know.
Yeah, and this has nothing to do with this, what we're talking about. So we could stop, that would be great, so we can move on here. Well, it just, we have to stay within what we're talking about, or else we have open meeting law concerns.
Well, that doesn't sound right. So we, now you can talk about open meeting law right now?
Yeah, let's move on.
All right, move on, all right, for a vote. Sandy? No. Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Teresa?
No.
Brian?
Aye.
And myself, I am an aye, which he carries. All right, moving on to facilities update. With Mr. Bransley.
We just wanted to touch base with you and where we're at with the district now. We've gone through what we laid out as a board in our work sessions. We had two work sessions and from that came the facility committee to, to meet with Denny and to review budget items. And so we've done that. We've had two different tours of the community members visiting, going through the building in Libya. That was a third thing we did. And then we were to contact our neighboring districts. I contacted GFW and we received an email from GFW talking about interested in sharing and working together whenever we can, but not in any consolidation at this time. And so then the last thing we did was, we did on Thursday after our board meeting, a joint board meeting was held with BLHS. And so we did that. So we went through those. So now the question is, what's the next move? Or what's the next thing and we're looking at facilities? And so Denny continues to gather a list of needs, both immediate and long-term, for our facilities. And putting together the budget for a capital that he presented to the facilities committee. He's working with that now, he's working on the roofs. And so he's also got some block that we're looking at and some projects that we need to seriously look at. So that's kind of, brings it up to where we are right now. So then the next step is where, how, where do we go from here? And so I talked with Todd Frank, he's the chair of the Citizens for Progress Committee. And so he and I visited and we discussed what's the next step. And he gave you each a letter, I believe, on one thing that they're considering, would, would like to consider. And was working with the district and providing a couple, three people, community people that would help with the maintenance part of it and the planning and things. And so I talked with Denny with that this morning. And so that's something you can look at as a board. I think that is dependent a lot on the person that is, is going to represent the community and work with them. And I don't think Denny has any problem with it. But it still comes back to the fighter or the facilities committee. And Denny, they're the one that puts that plan together. And so I think you gotta, you need to remember that whenever you, you work with that. But I think it's, we, there's experts in the community that we can tap into. And I think Denny's very open to that, so we work with that. That's the only caution that I see is that, is that make sure that, that who, where, how does that fall in as far as making decisions? The decision is still come backs, comes back to the board, through the committee and from Denny. So we have to remember that. So moving forward, we, in our discussion, we just, we talked about meeting with community members. And so that was what we felt our next step. And so that would take, for moving with bringing ICS to come in for a community meeting. And having a discussion circling around what the things we wanna look at. And I think we have to look at the plan. I think there's five or six of you people that have worked for over two years with ICS now. You've been through all the assessments and all the data that they've collected. And you've worked with that, and you've been part of the decision body that's, that's been making the decision and moving forward. And so, so I think it's important to take a look at that. And have ICS representatives meet with the communities. And first of all, find out, you know, what their concerns are. And then try and answer some of those and look at moving forward. And so I think that's what our, our next step is. And then when that's all said and done, then we make a decision what, how, where you're going to go. So I think that's our next one. And so in talking with Todd, we're, we're looking at a meeting, a committee meeting at the high school, at the school here and the gymnasium. We can, that's something we haven't been able to do until now. We haven't been able to gather large groups together. And that I think has really made our opportunity really tough for it. If we couldn't be in front of the public talking about it, it had to be all done by write, by, in writing, Facebook, whatever. And that's not a good way to communicate, which we all know that. So this would give us an opportunity to meet the community at large. And so what we're recommending is to schedule a meeting at seven o'clock on Thursday, the 22nd. A week from Thursday night. Be a meeting that we can have an open discussion. And I would like to have people submit questions, if they wish, to the district office. And what forward goes on to, to the people at ICS. They may come with and try and answer as much of the questions that we have. I think there's a lot of false misinformation that happens out. And it seemed like that just tested in the last weeks, and we don't know. So let's find out from the community what they wanna see. And so I think the group that we had in here, we got a good feel for how, what they found. So now let's take it to the entire community and do the same thing. And so if that's, if that follows your recommendations, we're moving in that direction. But I think that we've gotta bring the community together and say, what happened? What are the things you liked, what are the things you didn't like? What was, what can we do to work, to work and moving forward with our facility? I don't think the vote was telling us that something didn't need to be done. I think everybody I talked to said, there needs to be something done, but they weren't sure. So is it to work with the hospital? Is it work, to work with this building? What is the, where, what is the plan to move forward? Where the people that voted against it can get an opportunity to speak out and, and give us some direction? And then when that's all said and done, then you can decide what, what you wanna do. But it's, comes back to the board. It comes back to you people and making that decision. But I think we should start with the community meetings and vote from there. I think, any, I throw that out, put it on the table?
I like the idea of the facilities committee having some people from the community in it. I know Mr. Frank had talked, Dr. Frank had talked about how there were several, maybe two or three community members on it. And he said there are several members on the Citizens for Progress group that were willing to volunteer their time. I think that's very nice. I think we gotta make sure we, I think it's good to have the Citizens for Progress, because they, they have, they're working well together. They got a good group of people. But you have to open it to people outside of the Citizens for Progress too, if somebody else wants to get on it. Not just have the school and Citizens for Progress, because there's other people that aren't a part of that. So you have to open that up to others. And I don't know if there's a roster of the Citizens for Progress group or how that works, I don't know much about it. But just, just to let other people know, just because you're not in this group and you're not part of the school board or facilities group, there's still an option for you to put your name in there. And we can decide. But I, I like that idea.
And I think, you know, it's just not the one group, what you're saying. I think it's gotta be that group along with.
Just the community.
I think it's got to be that group along with the construction of the community. And that's what you need to have. Now is something I don't think we could get, were able to do with the pandemic out there, with, with COVID. And, and I know when you're going to work with a referendum, the face-to-face is where you're gonna get the most. When you can't do that, that's tough. And I think we found that out. And so I don't think, I don't see that vote as being 80 against the school. I think it's 80 saying, percent saying, we're not happy with what was on the table. So let's go back to the drawing board and see what. And that's what they need to, is it the dollars? Is it, I heard that the building need to have a design and all that. And get it all on the table, let's keep, let's do it. And there's nothing wrong with that. But I think the majority of people that I have visited have said, something needs to be done. I think that's what it's, what, that's what we need to do. So I think that's what this meeting would be a start of that. And then when we come in.
All right, any further questions on the facilities update?
And I just picked the 22nd. I, I looked at the calendars and, you know, I know field work is starting. And so, but that's a start. And having it like at seven o'clock at night. That just does. So I think it needs to be done. Other thoughts?
All I have to say is the Citizens for Progress, and, and it's not just those people. We have a lot of very knowledgeable people in our community that, just like these, these people, they stepped up and said, hey, we'll help you figure it out, we'll be there, we can find contacts. They have a lot of good contacts, which I think is amazing for them to just come in and say, hey, we've got outside help and people that we know that we can help you with. So I think it's a good idea to have them on there. Very appreciative tone for offering.
Volunteering.
All right, anything else? Hearing nothing else, I will make the motion to adjourn.
Wait, I don't, are we gonna agree with this? Do I have to make a motion on that or no?
Make a motion on your date?
I think you should, I was gonna, I was gonna mention this to you.
I will make the motion on a meeting Thursday, April 22nd at 7:00 PM with ICS as a community in the gym. I will make that motion.
And you want questions submitted beforehand, right?
If we can.
I was just gonna ask that. So what if, if somebody wanted to ask a question that night as kind of a follow-up or something? Is that gonna be? Okay.
They'll have a mic and you'll have a question and answers. Is that, the only reason I think if we can get some of them ahead, we can.
Oh, yeah.
Prepare for it, I think.
But I think we need to set ground rules.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
Well, I'm, I'm talking even masks. Masks. Being masked up.
Well, still mask mandate in place, so.
Well, I get that.
Kind of goes without saying, but, um, all right, so is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Motion is made by Nancy, it's seconded by Bookdell. And any further discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and begin with Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Teresa.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
And myself, I am an aye, motion carries. Now I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I, I do have one more thing I want to bring up really quick. Um, Bill Nybauer had mentioned something about, he said he visited with Mr. Bransway. So do you want to talk about that, about the Victory Center?
I can, I can bring it up and, and I meant to do it at our last meeting and I had it written down. I did so. Bill Nybauer was, was involved with, what do they call it, Victory Center? And so, and he came in and sat down and then about a half an hour, we were all kinds and we got the, the plans for it and everything. And, and I know that he's circulated around. He had that, what, 10 years ago?
Something like that.
Something like that. And so. He had a lot of interest in it at that time. I think he had half of it being paid by the state, but that's not there now. But he was wondering if the school would be interested in supporting him. I told him there'd be lots of questions we'd have to know. I don't know, like who's going to manage it, who's going to maintain it, who's going to, you know, take care of the facility? It isn't just to build the building and we know that from all this experience. So I think there's a lot of questions. Would we say no? Not, uh, no. I think you have to listen. He had some vision of it being out if by the hospital, by the school out there. Well, that's, there's a lot of planning to take place prior to that, so. But he was anxious, he was ambitious about it. So I don't know where, I think he visited a lot of people that, and the day that he was like on, he was out at the hospital. And I think he, he talked with you, Teresa and this and that, so.
He said too, that, um, that the school would take ownership of it and he'd probably sell it to the school for a dollar.
Yeah, and he, he talked to me too. And he was going to work on funding again. I think last time he actually admitted he had the whole building to work. Um, he didn't know if he would be able to get that this time, but he was going to work on that. I definitely think it's something that we should listen to and entertain that option for sure, why not? The one question I had was, you know, a little bit different than the wellness center option is that, like you just said, who's going to maintain it? So then I think with the wellness center, we wouldn't have had to maintain that building with the Victory Center, we assume it would. So that would be a genetic.
So it'd be, you would get a free.
Building.
Building.
Right.
That you pay a buck for and it's not, it's not in your pockets, which is, I think is kind of cool because that just eliminates a big chunk off of an idea for a new facility for us or doing something forward. But he just wanted to know if we're, if we would be interested, he'd look into it. He said, if you're not interested, he goes, I'm not wasting my time looking anymore. But he said if you're, he just wanted to know if the school is interested. And if we are, then he would pursue looking into it more.
I, actually, when I left it with him, I said, I can only speak for myself, but I would be very interested in hearing more about it. And I even, he, you know, wanted to talk to some legislators and I am pretty good friends with Dave Baker. And so I did tell him that I would mention it to Dave and I did, so I don't, I've talked to Dave sometimes, but.
That's kind of, that's an interesting project. But before the school can get all, I mean, we have to take a look at the maintenance of it and who's going to manage it and all that sort of. But it's, yeah, he wants to do the legwork. And so, so I think that it would be worth looking at. I know he talked with the hospital, the Jackie called him. And so I know he's out there talking things. And maybe it's a real viable option, not liable. So I don't know anybody who was back 10 years ago. None of you, you're all too young.
Two guys.
Not too young, no.
I was never on the committee floor.
I wasn't either.
I was on the committee, I just heard about it. And if it's Bill Nybauer, he'll make it happen.
Yeah, I say, he's pretty ambitious, so.
So do we have to make a motion on that, that was interesting?
I think they could be a question, I, I would have lots of questions that would need to be answered before I could even say.
He'd almost have to present it out of the.
Okay, so I'm asking him to come?
He could come to the board meeting, but I think at this point, there's, he'd have to put a plan together. But this is because it's not our dollars, you know? It's tax dollars, we have, there's lots of questions. And so I think he's got to do the legwork and tell us, you know, what's rights and benefits.
So he'd get on it when, when he has the information, I suppose?
I don't know, he just wanted me to ask to see if we're interested. He said if you thought you were interested, he'd look at, he would start looking into things and stuff. But he didn't want to start looking into things if we weren't even interested at all. So I, I get that too.
I guess I haven't, I haven't talked to him at all and I haven't heard anything. I know he's chatted with lots of folks. But yeah, maybe, maybe he'd want to present just a general thing to the board and then just say, I'm not going to talk on this.
But I think it's good for everybody to know, you know, you've heard about it now and so you probably hear it out in the community. But when it's brought back to the board and you're going to talk to an action, I mean, you're going to have a lot of details figured out. Not quite to that point yet.
Well, is that something he could just call and say, can I get put on the agenda? I'd like to just talk about what I'm looking at doing and present it, not asking for a yea or nay right now, but just giving you my information and this is what I'm looking at and what are your thoughts? You know, at least we kind of know where he's coming, then we're all here together instead of talking each one. Then he can present it and there are people out there that probably don't even, haven't heard about it, so.
Anything else on facilities? All right, with that, I made a motion to adjourn if somebody would second that.
Aye. Oh, maybe, I thought I seconded that.
Seconded by Bookdell and we'll vote. Melissa.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Teresa.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Myself, I'm an aye and it's 8:00. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.